Good evening Cedar, good evening Cedar Falls, welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, October 18th, 2021. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Miller.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Dara.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members, all members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looking at our first item is approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and second, it all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass, and Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So for special presentations tonight, I have two proclamations in the agenda, and if council indulge me, I've got one additional one that came in after the packet deadline. The first one is Character Counts Week, and I'll read that from here. It says, "Character Counts Week, week of October 17th through 23rd, 2021. Whereas since 1993, the third week in October has been proclaimed as Character Counts Week by presidents, the US Senate, state governors, and officials around the world. And whereas citizens of good character are a most valuable asset to our community, providing a safe and caring environment where all citizens value and model the principle that character counts. And whereas the six pillars of character are trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And whereas the Cedar Falls, City of Cedar Falls supports the Cedar Valley Character Counts Committee and our metropolitan youth development programs in their effort to promote and encourage community-wide character education programs. And whereas, all Cedar Falls residents should strive, strive to teach, enforce, advocate, and model the six essential pillars of character to our young citizens. And whereas this work will foster greater understanding and cooperation among individuals and organizations in our community to set good examples and address the civic issues that will shape the future of Cedar Falls and the Cedar Valley. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, do hereby proclaim this week of October 17th through 23rd, 2021, as Character Counts Week in the City of Cedar Falls. And I encourage all residents to become aware of the importance of community-wide character education and actively support the positive character development of young citizens throughout our community. Signed this 13th day of October, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green." And for my second proclamation, this is for Friends of the Library Week, and do we have Rhonda Bailey with us tonight?
Yes.
So I was asked by the Friends of the Library for a proclamation this week, and I was very happy to do so as an avid purchaser of books from the BookNook. And it reads, "Friends of the Library Week, week of October 17th through 23rd, 2021. Whereas the Friends of the Cedar Falls Library exist to cultivate a love of learning and celebrate the joy of reading by supporting library services for the community. And whereas the Friends of the Cedar Falls Public Library raise money, which enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas, the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas, the Friends' gift to their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how a lot of volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and community betterment." Thank you very much. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of October 17th through 23rd, 2021, as Friends of the Library Week in the City of Cedar Falls. And I urge all residents to consider joining the Friends of the Library, donate to and purchase from the BookNook inside the library, and to appreciate all that the Friends of the Library do to make our library and community so much better. Signed this 13th day of October, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green."
Perfect.
So, thank you very much, and do you have a few words for us? I heard you might just want to say thank you.
I was just going to say what you did, but not quite. But just like he said, join us at the Friends of the Library, and that's one of the major ways that we raise funds for our public library. So we, on behalf of the board, thank you for this proclamation and recognition.
Certainly. We'll take a little picture here.
Yes.
So we got a camera.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That proclamation's yours. Yes, ma'am. And our last proclamation tonight was at the request of Grow Cedar Valley, and that's for a proclamation for today, that reads, "Day of Inclusion, October 18th, 2021. Whereas every citizen should have the opportunity to participate in the economy, and whereas a diverse workforce drives economic growth and is integral to a strong economy. And whereas companies that bring together diverse cultures and people in the workplace ultimately capture greater shares of the consumer market. And whereas, a stronger and more creative workforce is gained when we can recruit from a diverse pool of candidates. And whereas, a diverse and inclusive workforce helps businesses avoid employee turnover and the costs associated with such turnover. And whereas, 85% of companies with at least $500 million in annual revenue agree that diversity fosters a more creative and innovative workforce and is crucial to fostering innovation in the workplace. And whereas, diversity and inclusion are critical to moving our economy forward, and whereas diversity and inclusion in the C-suite helps to leverage a company's full potential. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim October 18th, 2021, as the Day of Inclusion in Cedar Falls to raise awareness of the importance of inclusion to our economy and our community. Signed this 17th day of October, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green." So with that concludes our special presentations for tonight, and that brings us over to our public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Does anyone wish to speak from the public on public forum tonight? Mr. Frye, name and address for the record, please.
TJ Frye, 1319 Austin Way. During the initial presentation from the Equity Committee, they're talking about making it easier to file complaints or changing the way they file complaints on public safety. I'd just like to add, what about when people want to commend the police department? We, it's, it's easy to talk about filing complaints on law enforcement these days. We need to make it more, we need to make it easier to commend our officers and our public safety officials as well, so that's just something I'd like to add. To do that, it's, it's one of the things the mayor talked about, not needing council approval for, to change the complaint process. So let's look at commending those ladies and gentlemen as well. Another suggestion I had, we, we've had a lot of successes lately from our young members of this community. The men's golf team won the state championship. The, there was a student recently that had a perfect ACT score. We had a student, a teacher at Southdale that was educator of the year, recognized by the AEI, but we don't hear about those in council meetings as much. So I would hope that, you know, kind of moving forward, that we start recognizing the individuals in our community, they're doing such a fabulous job, that, you know, maybe they only get celebrated on social media for a day or two. We should be bringing those folks to council meetings and recognizing them as well. And then, we're a town of 40,000, I just did a little bit of research on my phone during the break here, we're over 100,000 people in the metro area. So that, that's the number I look at when we talk about like downtown development, is we're pulling from a population of 100,000 to try to get them to spend their money downtown, work, play, visit, and, and live in, in the Cedar Falls community. So that's, we're number 14, just Cedar Falls alone, a population of roughly 40,000, and the top 10, or the top cities in Iowa. Number 12, if you add you and I, we're the fifth largest county in Iowa. Polk County is kind of its own animal because of the capital and the big metro, it's a big metroplex down there anyways. But that's when I start, we start talking about the clientele we're trying to reach and the downtown we want to see in, for Cedar Falls, we need to start looking at who's coming, and it's well over 100,000 people, do we have the chance to attract? So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Does anyone else wish to speak in public forum today? Okay, seeing none, then I will close public forum, excuse me, is anyone on Zoom?
No one online.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will close the public forum and bring us over to a special order of business. Item four is a public hearing on the proposed plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the City Hall remodel project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion and second, it all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, and Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving into staff comments, is that Jamie Castle with us tonight? Okay, yes, so Ms. Castle, the floor is yours.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to do a short presentation, hopefully will answer some of the questions from the committee of the whole meeting. So the first, the purpose of the project is to remodel City Hall, to replace fixtures, finishes, and equipment that have outlived their lifetime. In addition, reallocating spaces and make it more user-friendly for the citizens and the staff. I wanted to put in some existing photos, it's hard to get everybody through the building, and so today I wanted to show just some of the wear and tear that we have. These are of the mechanical areas, you'll see that we've got some age to it, some items that we need to address. These are spaces downstairs. The first is the building and engineering window. As you'll see, there's a single height, one of the things with the project would be allowing us to do two different heights to meet our accessibility requirements. The middle photo is the lower level, you'll see that the spaces really are kind of awkward, and so if we wanted to utilize the empty police side, we would need to do some rework to better make those spaces available to everybody. And then we still have the old jail cells that right now are sitting empty, and we'd like to be able to use that space. Again, some other areas that are not necessarily organized in a good manner, the first photo is one of our HR offices, it used to be a hallway when we needed to have more space for offices, we actually broke up a hallway into two very long and narrow offices. The next is the mayor's conference room, it's, as you see, the finishes are outdated. And then the last two are again, wear and tear, and not the best space for what we need. And then again, just some wear and tear, we've talked about the finishes are 20-plus years, this really just emphasizes some of that area that we need to work on and to replace and to upgrade. And then again, the first photo is, we are not code compliant, our stair railing at one of the locations doesn't meet any current codes that we enforce everywhere else. The next photo is showing some accessibility issues into the mayor's conference room from council chambers, and then the last two are wear and tear and mechanical. So this is the floor plan, I showed it to you at the committee of the whole meeting, so I'm not going to go into great depth about it, but it is reorganizing the areas for the finance and business offices, and then it's also upgrading the area for council chambers and the public meeting areas. The lower level is reutilizing that space that we had for the police into the planning area, in addition to some more meeting spaces, reorganizing the engineering and building area, and then creating one single counter for everybody to come to, so that when you need to get a building permit, pay a parking ticket, there's one space you go to. Just some of the renderings that you saw at the committee of the whole meeting, the top two are that area outside of council chambers, the bottom two are the new spaces for citizens to come and get permits to talk to Section 8 and any business that they might have day to day. So the scope of work, I've already mentioned a lot of this, but it's renovating and redistributing office spaces, new finishes throughout, improving the accessibility, updating council chambers, creating public areas, and then we hope to reuse as much furniture as we can, but there is some that needs to be replaced. The scope of mechanical, I know this has been a large conversation, we do need a new HVAC system, we either need to upgrade the system we have, or we do need to replace it. We would like to upgrade to LED lighting, that's an efficiency item, a new network cabling system throughout for the areas that we need to update for better access, updated AV, and new fire alarm panel. I wanted to go back to the HVAC life cost study, we did a study with Michael's Engineering and with assistance from CFU. We reviewed multiple costs, the first was the cost to repair and update the current system. That was assuming that we were doing the remodel, and so that was the cost of not only to update it and correct the issues we're having, but to also reroute it. We compared initial cost of that system and three other systems to not only the initial cost, but to the lifecycle costs and the day-to-day cost to rent the systems. The VRF system that I've mentioned several times, the variable refrigerant flow system, had the lowest lifetime cost and initial installation cost. And so that's looking at across the board, not just installing it, it's how, how much energy do we, energy do we use, and the repairing cost from year to year. So that leads us to project costs, we're looking at a construction cost of $3.9 million, that does include a contingency, we always hope that we don't have to spend it, but it's very wise to have one in there when it's a remodel project, because we're not sure what we'll find. And then there's a soft cost, which are furniture, design fees, technology, at $618,000, for a total cost of approximately $4.5 million. Our project timeline is today we have the public hearing, I actually have an error on this, our construction pre-bid meeting is tomorrow, the public bid opening will be on the 4th, the apparent low bidder will be brought to council on the 15th, and then hopefully we'll be able to have approved contract on December 6th. And that is the presentation. If you have any questions.
Good thinking, Ms. Castle. The question I have is, is if we separated this out from need to have versus nice to have, looking at the mechanical upgrades and the changes that are needed for that, would there be a significant costing, or, or cost increase to the mechanical side if we didn't handle the, the rest of the renovations? Like, do we have to tear down walls anyway, and it's going to cost no matter what?
So, I, there's a couple ways to look at that. If you wanted to look at, are we going to do some work so that we're reusing the space and using the entire building, then there is one cost level. But if we're looking at just correcting the HVAC, there is a, a price decrease, if we're going to keep the system we have and simply correct as needed. I can get those numbers to you, but I don't have them right now.
Over to council? Yes, Susan, or Councilor.
Jamie, I think we talked earlier, and you mentioned that this was the same system used at the Aldridge Elementary School. Can you tell me how that, if they've had any problems or issues with it?
Yes, so that, this, the VRF system is being used throughout the city, the most recent one is Aldridge. In talking with CFU, they've not heard of any complaints or issues, I'm not really familiar with it, but there's nothing that's come through the building department regarding that, and CFU seems to think that they're happy with their system. Our, actually, I have our engineer on Zoom, and they have the system in their building, if you'd like to ask them some questions.
Well, I was curious, since a caller had told me they're very difficult in the cold weather, wondering if there was any difficulty in repairs in our climate.
Tom's on.
So for Mr. Folders, if, if you'd like to comment on that, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I, I apologize, my audio feed is kind of cutting in and out.
We can hear you fine.
I think I caught enough of the question to be able to answer it. There was a, I think the councilwoman was asking about the operation of the system in, in cold weather.
Correct.
And it is true that, that, when these systems first came out, one of the issues they had is that they had difficulty heating under low-temperature conditions. Over the last several iterations of these systems, they, they corrected that problem. So the, the component that, that rejects heat or brings heat into the building is designed to operate at a very low ambient temperature now. We've had this system in our building for three years now, and over a couple of winters, and we've had a couple of pretty cold winters, and we've not had any issues maintaining heating in our, in our facility.
Okay, and, and, so I apologize for the forum here, we will want to do public comments and then come back to council, so I apologize for that. So with that, so, Mrs. Castle had her presentation, I'll open it up for the public for public comments at this time, and then we'll come back to the council. So does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item, either in the gallery or on Zoom?
There's no one online.
Okay, so I'll consider that public hearing closed then, and bring us back to the council. Then we'll do this as, as item E, which is a resolution approving and adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the City Hall remodel project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motioned?
Seconded.
And seconded, so now open for council, questions and discussions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Sires.
Four and a half million dollars is a tremendous amount of money, especially to spend on a, right now, what I consider a fully functional building. We have some bigger needs, I believe, in this community, which is the street to Aldridge School, or now we're talking about a parking ramp, four and a half million dollars would go a long ways towards any of those things. I'm against this kind of a remodel, and I hope the rest of the council sees it that way, too. We raised taxes on everybody, and it would be nice to show that we're good stewards of that money, and vote this remodel down. Thank you.
Councilor Cruz.
Question on the dollar amount that was quoted, I'm assuming that's an internal estimate?
It's a combination of prices that we've put together and working with our consultants, they have done multiple updates to make sure that we are looking at the proper numbers. We do have the bids coming in, and we'll have an accurate at that point.
So this is subject to commodity prices maybe dropping, maybe not, maybe going up, do we have a contingency in there for changes in pricing of labor insurance, all those things?
We do have the contingency in there included for anything that we happen to find, that doesn't include if there's a labor price change. We are hoping that our estimates are current and up to date based on what we've been seeing out in the field right now.
So my experience over the years with construction and getting a bid, unless the public sector contractors are a little more, how should I say it, able to push a increase in cost on the consumer, with our contracts, they're locked in, they, they cannot fudge higher and say it just costs more?
Correct, and that, I guess that's what I was trying to say with the contingency, the contingency is used for things that we find, it wouldn't be factored into a change in cost. Once we have a contract and we've approved it, the numbers stay the same unless we happen upon something that is unforeseen, maybe we open up a wall that we found damages that we weren't expecting. Other than that, once we have a bid and we've signed a contract, the numbers have to stay.
Okay, then, so the contingency number was like 300,000 or so?
Correct.
What are the guidelines or criteria for using that? How does it get?
Yep, so if a problem arises, or if the customer, client, if we decide that we want to make a change, add something to the project, that's when that contingency would be used, anytime that there would be a change order, so whether it's something that comes up that's unexpected, or if there was a scope change on, that we decide to do, then that's when that contingency is used. But it is through a change order process, the contractor and architect don't just get to use it, it is an approval process. And I believe that there is a dollar amount that I'm not sure of exactly that we are allowed to do, those other ones would have to come to council.
So if the, if the city council doesn't approve this tonight, what are the consequences to the building? What still would need to be done, no matter what?
We're going to have the yearly upkeep of our mechanical system, that one right off. Currently, we don't have any pumps that are problematic, but as those do need repair, we would have to make replacements, and those costs would have to happen as they occur, rather than being pre, pre-planning for it with this new system. We would hopefully be able to do some upgrading to some of our furniture that's seen the wear and tear, and then also we will have to update some finishes that are just beyond their life.
And if, if it weren't approved, and we had the, the plans in place already for doing it down the road, would those have to be redone, or are the architectural renderings still good for several years from now?
We would be able to use them, we'd have to look and see if they were current to the codes and current to our requirements. Very rarely do you put a project on a shelf and it's perfect for when you go back to it, but we would be able to come back to that later on. I would like to advise that the typical increase is 10% every year that you wait on a project.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had the full facts out there. The Councilor DeBoer?
Well, you mentioned the pumps, how old are the pumps?
I believe that they're 20 years, Matt's nodding, they're, they're, they're all at least 20 years old.
And we have a boiler under the old part of the building, and then the furnace And we have a boiler under the old part of the building, and then the furnace is under the new addition that was built, what, 20 years ago?
I believe everything is geothermal at this time. So we did update the system 20 years ago to the geothermal system.
Okay. Other questions or comments from council? All right. Councilor Harding?
What's the life expectancy of pumps and the mechanics that we're looking at replacing, generally speaking? I know you can't give me an exact.
When we had the energy study done, the first thing that they said in it was that we've exceeded our lifetime. The 20 years is to the point where we're going to start seeing the wear and tear and needing replacement. Yes, it can last longer than that, and we've been lucky that it has. There's no guarantee, but typically the 20 years is what they state on those.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Cruz.
The timeline, I believe it said December would be the final approval, and then construction begins January, or what sort of timeline and relocating and that sort of thing? What's the plan?
Ideally, we'll start in January. They'll have to take some time to get the shop drawings in place and items ordered, but we'd like to start in January with the relocating of staff as required and construction beginning as soon as possible.
And then the length of time?
We're looking at nine months to a year, depending on how we stage it.
Councilor Miller.
Funding source for this is Capital Projects Fund, I believe. Is that accurate?
Yeah, actually, it would be, you know, similar to the Public Safety Building, that we've been saving up for it, you know, when we've gotten like backfill dollars, when we've had general fund savings. So it actually, on the CIP, I think says general fund savings is the source that's identified.
And for several years, it's been on capital improvements, correct?
We have had the.
Maybe not this dollar amount, but.
We've had the project on the CIP. I know this last year, the four and a half million was on there. I mean, I think in prior years, there might have been lower numbers. Stephanie or Jamie might be able to help me on that, but, you know, because I think some of this also grew in terms of, you know, originally we knew we were going to have to do furniture, finishes, carpet. And then as we learned about the mechanical system and some of that stuff, and with police moving out, so I think this, last year was the first year we had the full amount on the CIP. Is that right, Stephanie?
I'm thinking it's probably been about two years.
Oh, two years, okay.
It's been at this amount, but it started off in the CIP around fiscal '17, and then we increased it about two years ago.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded to approve and adopt the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the city hall remodel project. This requires a roll call vote.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to item five, which is a public hearing on the proposed adoption by reference the 2021 International Building Code, 2021 International Residential Code, 2021 International Mechanical Code, 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code, the 2021 National Fuel Gas Code, and the 2020 National Electrical Code and associated revisions to Chapter Seven Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed on this?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So now moving over to staff comments. Is that also Ms. Castle?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I presented this, a call meetings back at the committee of the whole, but just to give you a quick reminder, this is for the 2021 Building Code adoption. Every six years, the city adopts the most current model codes from the International Code Council. This is very similar to the timeline that the state matches. These codes are created and reviewed by lawyers, architects, engineers, and construction industry to ensure our codes are designed with life safety, current construction practices, and costs in mind. So what does that mean for us? By ensuring that we're staying with current model codes, we are making sure that the buildings are as safe as possible for all of our citizens. In addition, it aids in a higher ranking for the ISO ratings. As the fire department has a rating, so does the building department, making sure that all of our buildings are as safe and as current as possible. The organization of our building codes is two items. The first is we have Chapter Seven of the Code of Ordinances. This covers all of the administration and any changes that we would make, or amendments we make to the code, and codifies our processes and procedures. And then the model codes. The model codes guide staff to ensure structures are safe. By utilizing the knowledge from the model codes, we're able to enforce safe buildings. The codes that we are recommending to adopt are the 2021 International Building Code, Residential Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, sorry, the Uniform Plumbing Code, the 2020 National Electrical Code, and the 2021 National Fuel Gas Code. We are keeping two codes the same. The first is the ICC 8117, that's our accessibility code, and then the 2012 International Energy Conservation Code, which is actually managed by CFU. And that's the presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'll open it for public comment. Does anyone from the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none here and none on Zoom, so I'll consider the public hearing closed and bring us over to item E, five E, which is passing an ordinance adopting by reference the building codes I mentioned earlier.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, and it's on its first consideration. So is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Open for discussion on council? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Six is a public hearing on the proposed adoption by reference the 2021 International Fire Code and associated revisions to Chapter Nine, Fire Prevention and the Protection of the Code of Ordinances. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed on this item?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So Chief Bostwick will give us the staff comments on this tonight. The chief, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. My name's John Bostwick. I'm the fire chief of City of Cedar Falls. Jamie did an awfully good job of her presentation. Maybe I should just sit down, I don't know. I'm going to just give you a quick update on the fire code to the international fire code of 2012. Let's see, I need to do this myself. We don't have a whole lot of changes going on with our code, so, whoops. Okay. Each of these model codes provides for a minimum or a reasonable level of fire safety. Each time we change the codes, we know that there's going to be more updates coming in the future, that safety equipment is going to continue to progress, making our world a safer place. Our fire codes actually date back a long ways, back into the 1600s, where one of the original codes was actually to prohibit the use of wooden chimneys in the colonial times, although we would never think of doing that nowadays. That was reality at that time. As time progressed, we've seen fire codes progress to including sprinkler systems, and probably the most important thing is the smoke detectors that we see in our homes. Many of the changes that were made throughout this update of the fire code relate really to the reference number changes from the international fire code, and they just update those numbers as they go along. The fire code update is going to assist our community by updating the definition section for things such as unsafe conditions and crowd managers. Crowd managers is for larger events that we might see at the university or something like that. These changes will allow neighboring communities to have similar requirements to what we have and could alleviate some of the confusion between outside agencies and builders that move from community to community. One place where I think we're going to assist our builders and construction people is to directly reference Cedar Falls Engineering Road Standards. This will allow those builders to understand exactly how those roads need to be built for fire access roadways, so. Fire hydrants are an important source of water. We see them all throughout the community. We work closely with CFU to make sure those hydrants are placed strategically around the city. Fire Rescue tries to make sure that there's clear access to the hydrants. There has to be about three feet of clear space around the hydrant, and as we approach winter, we need to make sure that the residents or clearance know around those hydrants, too. That helps us an awful lot. When there's a fire in a building with a sprinkler system, the firefighters connect the hose lines to the system, and that helps to supply the fire, the water to extinguish that fire. The international fire code requires a horn strobe device that you may have seen on the side of the buildings, and that helps to direct the firefighters to where that fire department connection is and allows them to speedily connect the hoses and to provide water to that system, to boost the water to that system, excuse me. One of the things that our local code had previously done was to not allow the installation of the alcohol hand rub stations that we're really familiar with, with COVID, in the hallways of schools. And one of the things that the international fire code has done is to remove any kind of restriction for that, to allow those hand rub stations in the schools. As Jamie points out, building plans is a specialty area, and with facilities over 10,000 square feet, there's a lot of regulations and requirements that need to be taken care of. We require the larger facilities in our community to have an outside agency review those plans for compliance with our local codes as well as the international fire code. The international fire code appendix chapters gives some technical information on the best practices, the best ways to accomplish the codes. Some examples of that would be the spacing of fire hydrants, depending on the fire hazard that the building might have. If it's a low hazard, there's less fire hydrants. If there's a high hazard, there's more fire hydrants. Fire access roadways and required turnarounds, they have diagrams that specifically tell those builders and construction people how those need to be built to allow for fire truck Our staff recommendation is to pass the ordinance adopting by reference the 2012 Fire Code and associated references, revisions, I'm sorry, to Chapter Nine, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances. And I'd welcome any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Chief Bostwick. So moving into public comment first, does anyone from the public wish to speak on their fire code revisions? Is seeing none from the gallery and none from Zoom, apparently? Okay, so I'll consider that public hearing closed and move us to six E, which is passing an ordinance adopting by reference the 2021 International Fire Code and associated revisions to Chapter Nine of the Code of Ordinance upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and any council questions or discussions on this? Seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to item seven, which is a public hearing on the proposed rezoning from R1 Residence District and C2 Commercial District to C2 Commercial District of property located at 5424 University Avenue. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Summit.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed for this?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for staff comments tonight, we have Ms. Howard talking about this item, so the floor is yours, ma'am, or actually to JD.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Yes, we have a rezoning case, which I'll be going through it. This is a rezoning for direct appliance at 5424 University Avenue. Rezoning is requested from, to be changed from R1 and C2 to C2 Commercial Zoning District. This is located on University Avenue next to Happy Hippo Car Wash. And as in the background, you could see, this was a lot one of Fogdol University Avenue minor plot, which was created in 2006. The whole idea here is to remove the current split zoning on the property, as you may see on the map. The portion of the area is in R1, and the portion of the area is in C2. And the applicant is willing to expand the existing commercial use on property. As you see on the screen, there are two building additions to be in the proposal, along with some addition of paving areas, which is the intent of the application if the rezoning is approved. So when we do a rezoning, we mostly look into three criteria. One is whether it is compliant with future land use map or not. Yes, this project is. Whether the public services are accessible to this site or not, yes, this property does have access to all public services. And whether the property has a roadway access or not, and yes, this property does have one. The whole intent is to continue using the same use. They are not trying to change any use. The idea here is to just get rid of the split zoning and rezone it to C2. Therefore, they can continue expanding the commercial operation on site. With that, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the submitted rezoning at the regular meeting on 22nd September with a vote of seven a's and zero nays, and staff also recommends approval of the same. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I guess we have an applicant in the chambers, too, to answer any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'll open it for public comment first, and if council then has questions for the applicant, we can ask those as well. So does anyone from the public want to speak on this? I'm seeing none, and none from Zoom? Okay.
None from Zoom.
All right, so with that, I'll consider the public hearing closed and ask for an item seven E, excuse me, seven, yeah, seven E, passing an ordinance amending section 26118 of the Code of Ordinances by removing certain property located at 5424 University Avenue from the R1 District and C2 District and placing the same in the C2 District upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved and seconded. Any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, then we have a motion and a second, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that passes and takes us over to old business, which is item eight, passing ordinance 2994, amending Chapter Twenty-Six zoning and other associated sections of the Code of Ordinances relative to establishing the CD-DT Downtown Character District upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Open it for council questions or discussion first? And then for public discussion or questions, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Yes, Mr. Beck, you first, please, sir.
Darren Beck, 339 Golden, here in Cedar Falls. Not going to say much tonight, other than we've had a lot of discussion about the parking. I'd like to encourage you to think of it a little bit differently than what I've been hearing lately, and that is that there's two separate issues, the existing parking issues that we discussed earlier in committee, and the parking issues that would be created by this new ordinance. And I feel like it's the same discussion. I know there are others that see it as two completely distinctly different conversations, but it is essentially the same problem. I'm not here to be opposed to the form-based zoning. I'm here to oppose the parking requirements for the residential portion of the form-based zoning as it relates to new construction. You know, fundamentally, the form-based zoning seems to be where Cedar Falls is headed. There are other cities that are doing very well with form-based zoning. I've done a little bit of research and I have found, I have not found any cities that have this small of a parking requirement, and most of the cities that I find that in don't have the parking dilemma that we currently have for lack of infrastructure. I would ask you tonight to consider what is practical and what is the right thing to do in regards to this ordinance. Let's fix the parking requirements for the residential component prior to passing this thing. Otherwise, we're going to end up with new buildings complicating the existing parking problem before we have a ramp, and the ramp needs to come first. It's the infrastructure first, and then the growth should come second. We've got to stop growing and leaving the infrastructure for down the road. So I ask you to please look at the parking requirements, think to yourself if it makes any sense for an apartment or a condominium to have less than one parking stall. I don't know anyone who lives in Cedar Falls that doesn't have a car. You can't, you can't live in downtown Cedar Falls without going to get groceries or something to that effect. You know, there are cities you can do that in. Ours does not happen to be one of them at this time. So please, look at the parking requirement as it's written, and I would implore you to change it. If that takes two more weeks, two more months, whatever it takes, it's worth the wait. If that takes two more weeks, two more months, whatever it takes, it's worth the wait, and be thinking about our earlier conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Mr. Botsby, you wanted to come forward?
Eshan Botsby, 3831 Converter Lane. I guess I'll clarify, I represent Skyview LLC, Ben Stroh, in giving these comments. But it's not my traditional role as an attorney. Usually, when I come up here and speak, it's not a courtroom, and I'm not advocating specifically just on behalf of one client. I mean, I think it says something that business owners have to sort of rally together and get me up here to really have their voice heard, to really figure out what's going on. And so, I think that says something about what we've talked about, which is the lack of notice. I mean, if they really all knew what was going on ahead of time, why the rush? I don't think it's because they're lazy people, they're business owners, and like I said before, I think the notice that was put on, out on this before was, looked more like junk mail than a legal notice. But in any event, I heard earlier in the discussion, we probably need more parking. Councilperson said that. So, why are we reducing residential parking requirements now? I've heard over the last few meetings, and I think three times tonight, that we're looking for a compromise, and that the people that I talk to and my client need to come forward with a concrete solution. And I emailed every single one of you that concrete solution on Sunday. And I think, you know, it plays to everyone's concerns, and it's more realistic on both sides. So, you're talking about, well, first of all, my first proposal was just eliminate the four shared parking. That's one thing you can do. Because you pull that part in and out of the plan, that's not going to determine whether a developer builds with so many spots here or so many spots there. It's not going to affect how much concrete someone has to buy. It's not going to engender, you know, well, hey, I built my building this year, you built your building this year, and all of a sudden, you have fewer spots than me. It's not going to cause that problem. It's going to give time to actually look into voluntary shared agreements with more than just Viking Pump, with some of these other businesses that you want to force the shared parking on through this ordinance. What was done to bring them along in a voluntary fashion? We've heard nothing about that. What was actually done to bring them along? Or is this just easier to take it? Or we can change the ratios, and if you think that every single bedroom downtown has a car, you're wrong, probably. It's different from the Hill. On the Hill, with college students, you've got four bedrooms, and you essentially have four family units in a four-bedroom apartment as college kids. Some of them even have their own refrigerators because they can't stand to share the same fridge, and everyone's eating their own food. So, four college kids in a four-bedroom, probably four cars, maybe three. But I've heard, and I agree, that three-bedroom apartment downtown with, you know, professional couple, maybe there's two people in there for three bedrooms, and they've only got two cars. Maybe they've only got one car. But every unit is going to have a car. Because if you think that someone's living in a one-bedroom without a car, and you can build a building full of one-bedrooms, and you're only going to need .5 spots. So, if you have a building, and I put it in my letter, this might work out if you've got one-bedroom mix, two-bedroom mix, three-bedroom mix in a building. Maybe the ratios even out with .5 spots and then .25 spots. But if you get someone who builds all studios, then you might have 30 studio bedrooms and 15 spots. And if you think that that's enough parking for 30 studio bedrooms, you're kidding yourself. We're not there yet. You know, we don't have the hoverboards or the buses or the transits or the subways yet. You're kidding yourself. But again, on the other side, you're kidding yourself too. So, I think we made a pretty good proposal. One spot per unit, and then every bedroom in excess of one bedroom, .25. And I'm not going to go over it. You see in the chart, a prototypical building, it's not 52 bedrooms, like some, 52 spots for 52 bedrooms like some people want. It's 34 instead of the proposed 28. What's wrong with that? That's a compromise. Or do you actually seek compromise? 72 different properties, and I got one more in my email just this afternoon, I didn't send. I got three more properties that are protesting this. So, about 75 properties right downtown oppose this, and we've come forward with a compromise. By doing nothing and forcing this through, you really aren't listening. It's not a matter of disagreeing at this point. You really aren't listening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Botsby. Anyone else wish to speak from the gallery?
TJ Frye, 1319 Austin Way. I asked last time about liability, and it kind of was referenced to, or like Hy-Vee's parking lot, how it's their liability. But if it's a private partner or private public partnership, how can it be? It's not like Hy-Vee at all. Hy-Vee's parking lot, it's always Hy-Vee's parking lot. It's never somebody else's. But now, here we are asking a new development to share their parking. So, at what point does the public become liable for what happens during those public hours? Again, Viking Pump is mentioned. That was a voluntary negotiation between the city and Viking Pump. Why are there not a push for more of those type of relationships? Six months out of the year, we have the potential for snowfall, and these parking lots after hours is when the snow is getting removed. So, if we're using after-hours parking for public parking, how are those snow removal trucks and equipment supposed to go get into those parking lots and get them cleaned for the next business day for these business owners? They're not, they're either going to have to come through twice, or it's, you're going to come to your place of business, and your parking lot's going to look completely terrible because there was cars parked there, and they had to snow, and move snow around them. There was talk about also, like, sharing on-street parking within 600 feet or whatever it was. How many of those same businesses are sharing those same stalls? I mean, you said 10 of them could be included for the on-street parking, for your portion of shared parking, but how many of those businesses are using those same 10 spots more than once? And then what does enforcement look like? We've said it's private property, so is it the private business owner's responsibility to enforce rules that were imposed upon them? Or is the city going to take steps to look at enforcement options and help these business owners get cars out of their lot when they're not supposed to be there?
So, looking at some of the questions that have come forward, particularly the snowfall removal as a practical matter, do we know how other cities are handling that, or what the solution is for those sorts of things? I don't know if we have that information for you tonight, but certainly can get that. Ms. Howard, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I think with any kind of ordinance like this, there's going to be details, and of course, the property owner is going to be the ultimate decider on how they want to operate their property and when they want to remove the snow. I certainly think they can give notice, just like any other notices given for any other parking. When there's a snow emergency, you put up signs and say, you need to, can't park here because we're clearing the snow.
Okay. Still in public comment?
Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry. Well...
Okay, what, sure. I'll allow it.
So, a legal question for Mr. Rogers for liability. If a liability issue would arise in a parking lot, I'm assuming that it would be from neglect or something of the parking lot structure. That's one situation. If you have a bank that's open, and they have neglected their parking lot during business hours, and someone injures themselves, they would be liable, correct?
So, if there's a defect on the premises that causes the injury, the owner of the property would be, could be liable?
Now, my question is, is would they be only liable during business hours? Or what if someone was crossing through there in downtown and walking through after business hours, and they weren't sharing their property? Would they still be liable?
Okay, we're going to just ignore the fault of the pedestrian for cutting through there. So, if there's a defect in the day, it remains at night, and if the defect caused the injury, there could be liability.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so other comments, questions from the gallery? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to council if you have some questions or comments to bring forward. Yes, Councilmember DeBor.
I'd like to consider an amendment to it, striking out the words mandatory shared parking, and just have recommended voluntary sharing.
Second, then, Mr. Mayor.
So, an amendment to change it from mandatory shared parking to voluntary shared parking.
Right.
All right, so motion and seconded for council, and we already have an amendment out.
Excuse me.
Wait, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about second reading of an ordinance. Are we able to make significant amendments without going back?
No, this would be a significant amendment. It'd have to start over at planning and zoning.
So, we can hear the amendment, but it would take it back?
Right.
To planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. So, this would be an amendment to this ordinance, and entertain council discussion on it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
To that comment about going back to planning and zoning, I think it's important that we fix or improve or modify, adjust, whatever word you want to use, some of the perceived defects, and if there's suggestions coming forward, we should entertain those and have it in good form for the public.
Okay, thank you.
What would the timeline look like on, not that it really matters ultimately how long it takes, but would it go back to planning and zoning for just that aspect, or would the entire thing go back to planning and zoning? How would that work?
Well, the entire ordinance would be something that the Planning and Zoning Commission could discuss. I guess they would particularly focus on the referral, if you will, from the city council regarding this amendment or any other amendments proposed.
So, it could theoretically go back for one meeting and then come forward, or what would the public hearing, what sort of process from that standpoint? Would we have to put out another notice for a month? Do a...
Yes, we'd have to, if it goes back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it goes through all the formal requirements for notice.
Just curious.
And what we went through with the Planning and Zoning Commission included a decision matrix where we then, what amendments did they want to consider, and then staff provided and the consultants some pros and cons about that, ultimately with a recommendation, and then the commission voted on that.
I was just curious, thank you.
Quick question. If there were other amendments we wanted to make as well, would we need to do each one of these separately?
Well, it would probably help our planning and zoning commissioners to hear what direction or concerns the city council has, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah, they already recommended approval the first time around, so they would need to know what the council doesn't approve of then. Okay, so that's what's on the floor now, is that amendment. Councilmember Miller?
So, I understand it, right? The shared parking side, and I understand the property rights side of it, but staff and consultant have essentially said, new developers are coming in, and they're going to help provide public parking. So, the amendment to take away the shared parking side of it is to not have developers provide public parking? Or help in that problem, or...
It's to make it optional for the new business that wants to build instead of mandatory.
I can see both sides of it, but essentially, it's, then we're not asking developers to help with parking in downtown Cedar Falls. If you want to build in downtown Cedar Falls, then we have a requirement that you help with our parking concerns.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Cruz.
I guess to both of those comments, from what I've seen in the proposals, they are allowing the required parking to be around the perimeter of the building in the street. And to me, that takes away from public parking, and that's not considered the shared parking. The shared parking can be further off in another parking lot, another site that the developer owns, and that's taking away the opportunity from somebody else to develop, and takes away their privileges of taking, opportunity taking. So, making it optional, just like I know Ms. Howard has said numerous times over these weeks and months, that it's up to the developer to decide how much parking they want to provide. If they want to provide one per bedroom, they can do that. If they want to do, as Ms. DeBor is saying, to not have shared parking and put subterranean under their parking, building development, and then have it for the merchants, the employees of the restaurants and boutiques, shops, and so on, and ultimately for their customers, they can have it onsite, and they can choose that. They can be more competitive potentially. The property will be worth more in the future if it ever gets sold. I think that's a great option to have, instead of being told that you, you know, you have to share, can be optional.
I can understand that. I think it goes back to the parking consultant, and they looked at three different properties, and understanding all of our parking issues determined that we, there's a good chance we're over-parking a residential requirement, or a residential requirement is over-parked. So, I can appreciate consultant and staff looking at this and trying to find a way forward that balances all of this, all of the different needs of downtown. I walked down and counted parking stalls down behind River Place following a couple, the council meeting, a couple meetings ago, and there were 43 open spots down there. And granted, it's just one night, it's one snapshot. I've walked down there and haven't counted near as many before, too. But at the same time, I think moving forward, we got to be, and I understand the parking side of it, but we're also asking developers currently to build more parking than they need, which is a waste, it wastes space, and we have a finite amount of space downtown. So, I can appreciate trying to be unique and moving forward and trying to find a solution that isn't over-parking or under-parking, so...
Other comments, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to hear from others first. Okunardi, does anyone else wish to speak first?
I've got a question.
Councilmember DeBor?
Earlier tonight on another, well, similar topic, but did we not refer some future discussion about parking? Did we not ask staff to investigate some parking options for downtown? Isn't that something like coming from Ron? Did we not have that discussion before goal setting?
My understanding was that was really looking at the public parking aspect of this, and what you have before you is really what is on the private side.
But those kinds of discussion, we can't have the whole discussion about all the parking. It's not going to go away. This proposal, this ordinance is, was developed over two and a half years. We had all kinds of opportunity, and I personally don't believe that people were not notified, that they chose not to be involved initially. And now that it's, the horse is out of the barn, we're looking at going backwards. I would like to see us go ahead and approve this ordinance and then look at, parking's going to be an ongoing problem. So, let's work together, have some great ideas from Mr. Botsby and Mr. Beck, get those people to the table, and as a group, work, it's going to take years, but still work together to solve the issue. But I kind of resent, we spend a lot of taxpayers' money on studies with professionals who know how cities develop, and then we don't listen to them. So, if there's a way that we can move this forward and understand that there's going to be ongoing discussion, to look for solutions, problems that either are there or not, but we got to keep moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
To Mr. Gaines' comment that this is private parking discussion, as I said a little bit ago, we are allocating the perimeter of parking in the street to the building and considering that the private... that, private required parking for the building. So, you just took away public parking and allocated to a development for what is needed there, and then you also stipulate that there can be remote parking somewhere else, 600 feet away. So, you're dabbling into both the private and the public, so you're taking away resources that are available there. I like the idea of modifying what we've got in front of us now, that makes the most sense, the most logical sense, in some fashion to Mr. Vajpayee's comment there, which made sense. I would even go one step further in one spot per bedroom with the excess used for merchants, employees, and customers. It can be done, it's done in other communities, I see it happen in bigger cities all across the country when I travel. So, I think we need to make some modifications now, adjustments. I would like to have some, a chance to talk about the snow removal at a future point here, but that'll be another motion, possibly.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Harding.
I believe in the ordinance, that you cannot count parking on the road towards the parking you have to build, you can only count it, and correct me if I'm wrong, you can only count it towards the shared parking, not the actual parking you have to build, correct?
That's correct. So, the required parking has to be on-site.
Exactly. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember DeBurr.
I want to make sure we remember that, because I feel like it's the loud voices that we feel like we need to listen to, we need to make sure we remember the people who gave their time, over and over and over again, to get us to this point, as far as their input as citizens. We keep talking in circles, and there's misinformation constantly being put out. Thank you for Councilman Harding for just correcting some of that. It is time to move forward. We've talked about this, we've talked about the parking things, and I went on vacation in July, and we've talked about it the last two meetings. It's time to move forward. This is a vision that's been put together by people we paid a lot of money to, by citizens, and just because they don't have the biggest voice, and aren't, it's just time to move forward, please.
Okay, so, Councilmember DeBurr.
I just had a couple other questions, I don't know if it's the right time to ask them or not, but when they talked about changing the parking requirements to one bedroom plus a quarter, how does that affect the overall numbers?
I'm sorry, which proposal are we talking about now?
The requirement for one parking spot per bedroom, plus either a half or a quarter, depending on the number of bedrooms in the total complex. What effect would that be if we did change it to one bedroom per unit, plus a quarter per extra bedroom over one?
Well, it really would depend on the project, and what the mix of bedrooms are in the project. So, if there are a lot of large units, of course, that would probably result in, you know, not as many parking spaces overall, per unit. With, you had a lot of studio apartments, of course, the requirement would be higher with the new proposal.
With which one? If we changed it, or with the way it is written now?
If you changed it, of course. If it's a higher parking requirement than, for studio apartments, then it would be a higher number.
And would that ultimately help with part of the parking problem that they talk about downtown, if more of the parking was then created for the new buildings, if they had their own parking?
So, the proposal on the table is for private parking, and what we tried to do was thread that needle on, what is the actual demand for parking for residential? The goal wasn't to try to park all the commercial parking with this private parking requirement. The goal was to try to have the public parking serve that function, because then it can be shared parking. So, the public parking was intended to be the ultimate goal for serving a lot of the customers, and clients, employees of the downtown. What we're talking about here is the parking ratio for the residential. So, if you increase the parking requirement for the residential, it doesn't help any of the merchants downtown with their parking issues, because they can't share that parking because it's on private property.
Unless the business chose to voluntarily share it.
That's certainly true, although they're giving up quite a bit of development ground then if they, in order to do that. So, I guess that's a question about whether that would be a feasible option.
Councilmember Harding.
I was just going to say that the numbers, I was reading the letter that Mr. Vajpayee sent out, and crunching numbers, and the numbers, it just depends on what kind of building you build, essentially, as to whether it would provide more parking if it was residential. Does that make sense? So, if it was a bunch of, if someone did choose to build a building with all studio apartments above it, then his numbers would provide more parking, correct? But if they chose to build buildings with a lot of three bedrooms, then it doesn't always work out that way. And then as far as dropping the shared, but keeping the numbers the same, I get concerned that then we're losing creativity for finding public parking, for more public parking. So, it's a tough issue, I can see both sides.
Councilmember Miller.
I love local government for, as close as we are to people, and the impact that an ordinance has, or a zoning ordinance, or any of the laws that get passed, they can all be changed, right? Just like this process right here, they can be changed. Whether we use somebody else's recommendations, those numbers are going to vary, like Simon just said, and I feel like the work, the background work has gone into this, you know? We've seen a couple other developments happen downtown where it isn't ideal, I guess, at least in my opinion, maybe a door should have been put on the back, and hindsight's 20-20, and I think there's always cases where probably our existing zoning code wasn't perfect for every scenario, but again, to Ms. Howard's point, we're trying to thread the needle here, we're not being over, I mean, we hear all the time from developers, that Cedar Falls is really hard to work in, it's really hard to develop, and then you hear on the other side of it, that these developers aren't parking, they're not giving enough parking, they're not doing enough, and we're trying to find middle ground there, and I can, I can see both sides of the argument here, but I think the background work has gone into this. If it doesn't work, if we find one development that doesn't work, the council has an option to go back to P&amp;Z, use the process to change a parking requirement that doesn't work. But the creativity and the thought going back into this is that, which, we've heard that how many times? Developers come in, and they don't care about this city, they just want to make their money. And staff is going back to them and saying, we're going to put this in here, so there's cooperation, so you are helping the cause for downtown parking. And for me, it's, we have to have laws, we have to have rules, we have to have a zoning code. We've had one for 50 years, and I can guarantee it wasn't perfect when it was first passed, but I think it's time to move forward.
Okay, with that, I'll, no, we're still on the amendment right now, to change mandatory shared parking to voluntary shared parking. Does anybody from the gallery wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing, oh yes, Mr. Vajpayee, please. And I'll consider this a separate item, since it's a different motion.
3831 Converley, E. Sean Vajpayee. I guess the point is that if you put ground for commercial underneath all that residential parking, then that's like, you're going to have a developer build one building, so they're going to possibly be leasing everything, so they're going to be leasing the residential and leasing the commercial. So, I don't think it's a stretch too far for them to then voluntarily say, maybe I have like excess supply from my residential, barely, and so then the commercial tenants are going to be able to park there. I mean, I think by saying that the commercial tenants are never, the commercial customers are never going to be able to use this residential parking if it's increased, is not true. It's private property, it's residential. Well, if you put up no parking signs, only for residents, yeah, but if you don't, because if you own the whole building, you can let the restaurant people park in the parking lot you own, and let their tenants park in the parking lot you own, too. Again, voluntary, working on a solution. It's not just new developers that might come to the table and want to do these voluntary parking things, it could be existing buildings that want to do the voluntary parking arrangements, if they're given some assistance, or we can just force it. And on the point about if some, the liability, I mean, first of all, if it's my parking lot, and it's residential, and you cut across it, and I've got signs that say, don't come onto my public property, or my private property, then that's a trespasser. So, I want to really make that clear, that's a trespasser. And then you can lay off that liability after business hours. You can lay off that liability by restricting the use of your parking lot only to business hours, when maybe you have someone there supervising it to keep it safe, throwing down salt and stuff. But after hours, when you don't have that ability to keep it safe during a snowfall, you can say, stay off my private property, and eliminate your liability there. But then what happens when the city tells you, you get to be open, when you don't want to be open for parking, and you don't have any control anymore during the active business hours for the safety, then you get a new liability. So, as someone who's handled a lot of slip and fall cases, I'm not trying to give you the for-sure advice on that, but that's generally how it works. So, thank you.
Mr. Vajpayee. So, any other comments from the gallery? Seeing none, then we are again on the motion to amend, so this is to change mandatory shared parking to voluntary shared parking. Any final council comments? Okay, so, this amendment requires a voice vote, so all in favor of making this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so let's see a show of hands for aye, one, two, three, and opposed, one, two, three, four. So, that fails, and takes us back to the original motion, which is amending Chapter 26 and other associated sections of the Code of Ordinances for the downtown character district on its second consideration. So, any further discussion? Councilmember DeBurr.
We have a question. On your matrix of different options or questions that they had, number 10 was regarding vinyl siding, and then it's confusing when it talks about, options one, two, and three were agreed on, but not number four. Number four was regarding, oh, what was the wording they used? Delete the prohibition on vinyl siding from the code altogether. So, basically, my question is, are they allowed vinyl siding on new construction, or are they not?
Not in the down, not in the area, no, not in new construction. That's what the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's where they fell down on those various options that they considered.
So, you were only allowed to put siding up if you were repairing something that was existing and already was sited, but no new vinyl?
Or if you have an existing building, you want to put vinyl siding on it, you can do that as well. If you don't have existing vinyl, and you want to put vinyl on your building, you can put vinyl on an existing building.
And what was the reason that they're not allowing vinyl siding on new construction?
So, I think it was kind of in the matrix, explained the background on that. I think there was concerns about the environmental aspects of vinyl siding and the longevity of it. So, I think there was concerns about environmental quality, air quality if it burns. I think there was a lot of discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's where they fell down on that particular issue.
Any other questions on that main motion? Councilmember Cruz, or comments?
Regarding vinyl siding, I did a little investigating. With a quick Google search, I found that vinyl siding with proper maintenance, just like any other building material, can last 60 to 100 years. It's more environmentally friendly than cutting down more trees for wood siding, and it's a thermoplastic, so it's extremely recyclable. Now, we may not have the facilities in town to recycle, or nearby, but at one point, we could only recycle clear glass in town. Now, we can recycle all different colors. We can now recycle styrofoam, and we never could before. We can also recycle asphalt shingles. So, there's changes in the world on recycling ability of different commodities, and in that regard, I'd like to make a motion to remove the prohibition on vinyl siding in this area, because this area covers a lot of residential, neighborhood medium and neighborhood small.
I'd second that.
So, it's a motion to amend, to remove the prohibitions on vinyl siding.
Saying in new construction.
Any council discussion on this? Councilmember Miller?
To Mr. Rogers, is this substantial?
Certainly is. It's right in the wheelhouse of what the P&amp;Z considered and decided upon.
And it is only for new construction, correct? Did we not just clarify that, like an existing homeowner can put vinyl siding on?
That's correct.
Any other discussion?
I could also add that as you increase the cost of new construction by mandating brick, stone, or wood, you're pricing out of the market in the Cedar Falls area, I want to say 125 families per $1,000 of increased cost on a matrix that I'm familiar with, that I can get to everybody from the Vinyl Siding Institute. So, there is a negative unintended consequence here, that we're going to remove the opportunity for housing for low and middle-income people with that aspect, and I think the intention is to provide more housing for the community, not less.
Any other comments, questions? Open it to the gallery, if anyone wishes to speak on vinyl siding removal. Okay, seeing none? Then it's been motion and seconded to amend, to remove the vinyl siding prohibitions, this ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Show of hands for aye, one, two, three. Nay, one, two, three, four. So, that fails also, and brings us back to that original motion. So, any further discussion on the original motion? Yes, Councilmember DeBurr.
One of my big concerns is the use of the mix of housing types in R1 and R2 districts. I know you've told me, well, there's not a lot of R2 in this area, but this is also the plan for the, imagine the Hill, which involves about 100 blocks or more. So, my question is, what would we need to do to protect, so that in R1 and R2 housing, which would now cause small building, or whatever your words were, how can you protect them, so that you can't have a row house or a cottage cluster in what's currently R1 and R2?
So, I think when the ordinance is developed for College Hill, that will be part of the discussion, of course. It'll be a public.
Well, this is part of the ordinance, though, not the location, but the ordinance.
Right, the ordinance will have to be reviewed, just like this ordinance was. The Planning and Zoning Commission for this ordinance held four work sessions and three public hearings, it'll have to give public notice, the public will be allowed to speak on those particular issues. If there's a proposal in the proposed code to allow alternative housing types in those particular zones, that will be part of that discussion, and of course, the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission will certainly get to weigh in on that, and whether that's a good idea or not.
So, you're not necessarily going to have the same type of zoning as what, or form-based zoning, as what you're having in this district? You're telling me that you're possibly going to change it?
Yeah, certainly, you don't have to have the same kind of zoning. I think that's the whole idea behind this, is you calibrate your zoning based on the neighborhood area, and what you need for that area.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
Going back to our speaker, several speakers here with the parking spots per bedroom, I think the proposed idea of one spot per bedroom with a quarter spot for every bedroom after that, hits home to the desire of having adequate housing for one individual per unit, and then as more people, more bedrooms are introduced, the likelihood that some of those will be occupied by people with the quarter spot per additional bedroom. I'd like to make a motion to adopt that as our ratio.
Can you please give that as a full amendment, of what you're looking to do?
I would like to change, make a motion to change the half a parking spot for the on-site to be one per unit with a quarter spot for the second additional bedrooms.
Okay, so I have that as amendment to change half parking spot onsite to one per unit plus, how many, by a point?
One quarter.
A quarter?
Quarter? Okay, quarter, one quarter.
Basically what was recommended by the speaker? I'd second that.
Okay, motion and seconded, open for discussion on council. Okay, any from the public in the gallery? It's been commented on earlier. So anything back from council? Then it's been, for this amendment, it's been motioned and seconded. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, or let's, for a nay?
Nay.
Nay, okay, so show of hands for aye. One, two, three. And for nay, one, two, three, four. So that fails as well. Bringing us back to the original motion.
One more item, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. It's my understanding that this proposal is going to eliminate the use of planning and zoning for any development in this area, and then replace it with a zoning review board?
So it would just be reviewed administratively? Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to remove that and keep the planning and zoning process. And then I can explain after I get a second.
Okay, so that's, well, that's an amendment, so that's valid. So is there a second?
Sure, second.
A motion, second for discussion. Councilmember Cruz?
Okay. When you put the future of a development and the future character of the neighborhood community downtown in the hands of administrative review without transparency and public oversight, you can have bias, you can have favoritism towards past developers, you can have relationships that are ingrained. It may work if you have form-based zoning in a new 900-acre addition development to a community, but we have a city that's got 150-year-old buildings. There's going to have to be some compromise on the checklist, which we have basically a checklist in our code right now. It says you have to have setbacks and various things. So I would be strongly opposed and very concerned that we're going to just allow an administrative review on a proposal for a development and not have full transparency that we have now with planning and zoning.
Okay, that's a comment. I have a question for Ms. Howard, over for staff. With this administrative review, is it intended to have Planning and Zoning Commission provide the standards still for what can be constructed?
So the idea behind this, and one of the things we heard during the visioning process, was that we have a lot of vague standards in the code right now and are open to a lot of interpretation. And so when you have vague standards, lends itself more to a discretionary process to go and negotiate your project through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. There was concerns about creating standards that were more clear and objective, so that they were very cut and dried. So the idea was behind, if you did that, which was the goal here, is to create more standards here, so it was really clear what the rules were. And then you wouldn't necessarily need a discretionary process, because there wasn't much wiggle room then, because the rules are right there in the zoning code.
And then what happens if a developer brings something forward and the administrative committee or the review board denies that ability to build? They say, "No, this project doesn't comply." What then is the appeal process? Can they go to some other group to say, like a higher level, to appeal?
Right, so the appeal to that would be the Board of Adjustment if they feel like that the staff made an error. So supposedly, if it's a clear and objective standard, it's either yes or no, they've met it. If there's some disagreement about the interpretation of the code, then that would, by state law, would go to the Board of Adjustment.
So Board of Adjustment is a transparent body, open to the public, correct?
That's correct.
Councilwoman Harding?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but planning and zoning, the form-based zoning is to create a checklist that is black and white. And that way, a developer can look and see the guidelines. Now, if someone wished to change the zoning in that area, it would still go to planning and zoning in that case. This is only just for the review of a site plan?
That's correct.
Okay, so planning and zoning is still going to be there to deal with zoning issues. And if someone wanted to build something, say, in an area of the Downtown Character District that wasn't allowed and they wanted it rezoned, that would go to planning and zoning?
Right.
If they wanted to change the zoning.
But if it's requesting a rezoning, if their land is being subdivided, any of those kinds of cases would go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council.
So it's just for site plans?
Yes, just for site plans.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Cruz?
In regards to the apparent vagueness in our current code, you're saying you want to make clear standards. Could we take those clear standards and put them in our code and then have the review, the planning and zoning, be the zoning review board? And then it'll fly right through planning and zoning with a rubber stamp? And the public can look at it and say, "Okay, I buy into that." You've then eliminated the bias that I mentioned earlier and the favoritism towards maybe the same one or two developers that always develop. I think there's an avoidance there that we should pursue. And if you can write a clear code for a zoning review board, you can write a clear code or standards for planning and zoning review in our current code. You just adapt it into our code.
So it is in the code? That's what we're discussing tonight, is the zoning ordinance. So it'll, the rules will be in the zoning ordinance.
I understand. But then planning and zoning will look at it, and you don't have an internal, for lack of a better word, secretive or a non-transparent review. You get to see with open eyes what's happening in your community. And I think that's very critical. That's the nature of our government, to have checks and balances, three readings for something. You know, public opinion, public comment. That's critical. You're taking it away and you're going to, in my mind, towards a socialist type of environment.
So the only, the only part of the downtown study area that currently requires Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council review is the CBD overlay. All the other areas of the, all of those other zones currently are done administratively. So if you're in C2, C1, R2, R3, that are outside the CBD overlay, those are all, and that's true of the entire city, in fact, all of, most of the zones don't require P and Z and council review for a site plan. It's in the overlay zones when there's some discretion that it's brought back to P and Z and council.
So in those areas where there's overlays, why should we not have transparency?
We are.
That's not a fair question to her.
That's, you're eliminating it with the zoning review board. Am I thinking something?
Okay, so maybe I'm missing something here, but that's the point of form-based zoning. We are approving the transparency is in ordinance. You go, you read, you see what you can do, you either make the checklist or you don't. And you build, or you don't. You have avenues to go to appeal, and you can still come to council, but that's, planning and zoning has recommended that the form-based zoning, where I don't see that we're taking planning and zoning away. Planning and zoning is just that. It's to oversee zoning. It will still oversee zoning and planning. You're taking away a small faction of site plans that must be approved by planning and zoning by saying, "This is what you have to do to get them approved." It's literally black and white.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a moment, you've had a lot of speaking tonight. Councilmember DeBurr?
I just want to make sure I understand. So basically, in the overlay area downtown, they currently have to go through P and Z review. In this ordinance, that would be eliminated, correct?
That's correct. Been replaced with putting more clear and objective standards in the code to follow.
It's replaced with an administrative review?
Right.
Other comments on this side? Okay, Councilmember Cruz?
Like I said again, put those clear standards in our current code and have planning and zoning look at it with public eyes and say, "Okay." Because our city's 150 years old, or parts are older probably. When you start digging, or when you find something that's happening there that isn't the norm, isn't on the checklist, Board of Adjustments isn't there, and the criteria for Board of Adjustments is so narrow that it's ridiculous, really. And I just think you're doing a disservice to the public and to the people not to have transparency. I wouldn't want to allow something to pop up next to me in a residential area or wherever, again, in the overlay. And the overlay covers some of the residential area, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, isn't the overlay disappearing with this ordinance?
Yes, this replaces the overlay. I just want to make clear that it doesn't, whether it's form-based or traditional zoning has nothing to do with this particular question. If it's in the zoning ordinance, whether it's form-based zoning or traditional zoning, those are the rules. And they're there, and there's a lot of things that are reviewed administratively in our current ordinance that never get to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. There's a lot of zones, a lot of places in the city that don't review site plans through P and Z and council.
But there are a number of things that do, and you're eliminating those. And you're making them administrative, and I have a problem with that. It's just, like I said, the nature of open disclosure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I find it insulting that we are constantly insinuating that our staff is crooked. We talk in circles, they answer a question, they put it in black and white, and we constantly disrespect them and insinuate they are doing something under the table. That is wrong. It creates division. It does. You do.
It's not your, it's not your turn, council.
I'll respond at some point.
You're out of order. Please, let her speak.
She's done.
I'm done.
Okay, now you may speak. Councilmember Cruz, the floor is yours.
I'm not implying anything other than standard, open disclosure by the government process. If we could put everything in clear, black and white language, we would not have to have three readings on anything.
They are putting it in black and white.
Let's let him finish, please.
I'm done.
Councilmember?
Yeah.
Done. I'm going to ask to not have cross-talk in this meeting. We need to give everybody a chance to finish, please. Councilmember Harding?
I was just going to say that, I guess it depends on how you look at it, but I tend to side with Councilmember Dunn on this. The whole point of the ordinance is to put it in black and white. It's there. It says what you can do and what you can't do. It's way more strict than what we currently have. It gives you a yes or no. It will be good for developers in many ways to see what they can and can't do. So if anything, it opens up the table to not play favorites and to not have it politically biased, because then a developer can, from out of town, could look at our ordinances and say, "This is what I can do to get something built in Cedar Falls." They know what they have to bring to the table. And staff can't just say no because they don't like that developer. Staff says, "Oh, you checked everything off, you can do that." Or, "You didn't check everything off, you can't do that." So for me, it takes political bias and corruption out of it, and it actually makes it more open-ended to more developers, and it just makes it more black and white. So again, depends on how you look at it. That's the way I see it, is that it opens it up for more players at the table, more development, more, a better future for everyone theoretically, and more black and white of what we can and can't do, less favoritism. So that's how I see it. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I'm seeing.
And I'll just note, too, this isn't set in stone. So if you find there are issues with it, you could always change it later, to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission rather than the Administrative Appeals Board. So we're not locked into this for the future. Councilmember DeBurr?
I just wanted to say that I'm for the planning and zoning review, because it gives the public another opportunity to speak and be heard.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cyrus?
I'm definitely in favor of planning and zoning. That's a place where both sides can get together and make a deal. I've seen that happen several times down there just recently, where a developer came, people in the area weren't very satisfied, they worked a deal out, everything was great. I think we need to have planning and zoning, no matter what we do. That's all.
Great, thank you. So do we have, is that an amendment on the floor currently? Okay, so the amendment?
Is there a motion and a second? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
The amendment is to have the Administrative Review Board change, or that process changed to using the Planning and Zoning Commission instead for site review. So if no other discussion on it, then we'll vote for the amendment, which, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so a show of hands for aye. One, two, three. And nay? One, two, three, four. So that fails and brings us back to the original motion, which is, let's see, item eight, amending Chapter 26 relatively establishing the CD DT Downtown Character District upon its second consideration. Any further discussion or amendments desired? They're seeing none? Then at that original motion, it's been motioned and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, three voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And that brings us over to item nine, which is passing ordinance 2995, amending Section 26-118 of the Code of Ordinances by removing all property within the defined boundaries of the Downtown Character District from current zoning districts and placing the same in the CD DT Downtown Character Zoning District upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, open for council discussion. Seeing none? Any from the gallery? Yes, Mr. Frank?
I just had a quick question. The other motions that were put forward, you allowed for public comment, but the last one, you didn't. I just wanted to know if there was a reason behind that, or if I could go back and maybe comment on what was discussed, the amendment that was proposed?
Okay, thank you.
Could he comment, Mr. Mayor?
What's that?
Could he? He's asking if he can comment.
On the previous motion?
On the P and Z.
Be in favor of it.
That's, that wouldn't be normal, but would council object to that? Commenting on a previous item?
He could do it during, well, I guess he can't. Public comment's over.
Okay, please.
Well, I'd just like to point out that you did allow for public comment on all the other amendments, except for that last one. And I was wanting to comment on that, but it's already been voted on, so it's really pointless. So thanks.
Well, there is going to be a third reading, so your comments would be, he could.
It's relevant, then.
And I'll be there.
Any other comments from the gallery? They're seeing none? Then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, three voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that passes, and we'll be moving forward to third reading on the first, along with the previous item. So item 10 is passing ordinance 2996, amending Section 26-118 of the Code of Ordinances by removing certain property located in the vicinity of Cedar Heights Drive and Valley High Drive from C1 Commercial District and placing the same in the RP Planned Residence District upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second.
So motion and seconded, open for council discussion. Seeing none? Any from the public? Seeing none there on Zoom? None, okay. So it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Taking us over to new business in the consent calendar, we have items 11 through 17. Does any council member wish to pull one of those items for separate discussion? They're seeing none. Does any from the public wish to pull an item for a second, separate discussion from 11 to 17? They're seeing none, and I will read those items. 11 is receiving and filing communication relative to the creation of a sister cities committee as a subcommittee of the Cedar Falls Art and Culture Board, which we'll be recruiting for soon. 12 is receiving and filing resignations of members from boards and commissions. 13 is receiving and filing committee of the whole minutes relative to downtown zoning code, private parking. 14 is receiving and filing a communication from the Civil Service Commission relative to the certified list for a position of code enforcement officer. 15 is receiving a filing referring to Planning and Zoning Commission, a communication from Community Main Street relative to the establishment of the downtown Cedar Falls Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District. 16 is approving application of J&amp;M displays, Holiday Cupola, for a fireworks display permit for November 26, 2021. And then 17 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. And then 17 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items?
So move.
The motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? If those pass, takes us over to the resolution calendar. These items will act on by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does anyone wish to pull on item 18 through 25? Seeing none, does anyone from the public wish to pull on item 18 through 25? Okay, then I'll read those items. 18 is a resolution supporting participation in the Home Base Iowa Initiative. 19 is a resolution approving and adopting the rate of $3.89 per $1,000 of taxable value for the downtown Cedar Falls Smith District for FY 23. 20 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement for testing services relative to the Park Drive lift station. 21 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a quitclaim deed for Highway 58 and the Ridgeway Avenue Project. 22 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement relative to strategic planning for the Art and Culture Board. 23 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement to the Professional Services Agreement with Riverwise Engineering for the Cedar River Recreation Improvement Project. And then 24 is a resolution setting November 1st as a date of a public hearing on proposed condemnation of property located at 710 West 13th Street. 25 is a resolution setting November 1st, 2021, as date of public hearing on proposed condemnation of property at 1303 Walnut Street. Is there a motion to approve these items?
Move or pass the resolution calendar?
So motion and seconded, motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that takes us to item 26, allowing bills and claims of October 18, 2021. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion and seconded, any council discussion on this? Any from the public on bills and claims? Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any council referrals tonight? Didn't see any in the packet. Any council updates? Seeing none? So for staff updates, do you have anything for us, Mr. Gaines, tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Chief Birdy'd like to come up and discuss the drug take-back program that we have.
Okay, it's Chief Birdy. The floor is yours, sir.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to mention that this upcoming Saturday, we're having a drug take-back event out at the Public Safety Facility from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we'll have staff there to help collect up unused prescriptions. And we do it every year. It's a very successful event. And we have a receptacle out there year-round. And just to give you the idea, the amount of prescriptions we get, in the last two years, we have almost 600 pounds of prescriptions that we return to the DEA. So this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, we'll have staff there to help out.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. That moves, anything else for staff tonight? Okay, so that moves us over to executive session. Item 27 is an executive session to discuss property acquisition for Iowa Code Section 21.51J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the government body would pay for that property or reduce the price the government body would receive for that property. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So move.
So motion and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we will move to executive session now in the council chambers, or the mayor's conference room, I apologize. So we will return just to adjourn. So this will conclude the main portion of our meeting tonight. You're welcome to stay to watch us adjourn later on, but it might be a while. Otherwise, thank you very much for attending tonight in a difficult group of discussions and I look forward to seeing you in two weeks.